I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under a God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you do roll call then, please?
Freihover?
Here.
Tao?
Here.
Remy?
Here.
Next is approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda? We don't really have any consent agenda where items would be pulled from it, so is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second, let's proceed to vote.
Tao?
Yes.
Freihover?
Here.
Yes.
Yes.
Remy?
Yes. Next item then is approval of the minutes from May 6th.
Motion to approve minutes from May 6th.
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion on them, any changes? Let's go ahead and vote on them then.
Freihover?
Yea.
Tao?
Yes.
Remy?
Yes.
At this point, it's public participation, anyone willing to speak on anything not on the agenda with a three-minute time limit? Please go to the microphone. See none, we will move on. Appointment of a commissioner to the Historical Preservation Board. And I have been attending the meetings as a onlooker. They brought up tonight that since it their meetings are right before ours, and so it can be a long night for someone, they're willing to have a rotating member so that we could share that concept. Otherwise, I'd be happy to go ahead and be on there. Just makes a long night, but say the be. Comments if you want to rotate it, it's kind of an interesting they sometimes have some things to discuss. Meet's at five o'clock on the first Tuesday. But there was a little break tonight, sometimes they have gone till 6:30, I noticed, but if anyone's interested in doing it all the time, that's fine.
I'd be willing to help alleviate and rotate.
Okay. Richard?
Yeah, I'd go for that.
Okay.
Um, Mr. Chair. I will have to double check, I don't see why we couldn't do that, but just have to check the what it says as far as appointment of a person. But I suppose you could call a substitute, say if you couldn't make it one meeting, I would think, but we'll have to double check.
Yeah, I didn't think about that when they brought it up. They were just trying to
Make it easier.
Yeah.
Yeah.
To make sure that they had a P and Z person there.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
Well, I know I won't be there in October. So would one of you, we could appoint, I mean if one of you is willing to do it as a permanent person and then if we need to change it, I guess we could do that.
I know they were asking for a Realtor, they called our MLS and asked
Yeah.
volunteers, but I don't know how that resulted.
Then, because they need two places, they need the Realtor and they need a P and Z, so I guess we could agree to nominate Nina, and then if Realtor does come up, then you'd be available to fill that, so. I move we appoint Nina to the Preservation Board.
I second.
Got a motion in a second. Let's proceed to vote.
Freihover?
Yes.
Tao?
Yes.
Remy?
Yes.
Then we also need to pick a vice chair to replace Emily. I know Bob isn't here, but he'd be willing to do it. Would someone like to nominate him if that were the case, or would someone be willing to do it?
I nominate Robert.
I second.
Got a motion in a second.
Do you mean Robert Bright?
Yes.
Just to confirm, okay.
Let's go ahead and proceed to vote.
Freihover?
Yes.
Tao?
Yes.
Remy?
Yes.
So Bob will be our vice chair, and he will be here in October. That's good. Next is public hearings. Nancy, some land use code revisions, I guess you're up.
Okay, good evening, now, I think both of you have been at work sessions public here, but Nina has not, so I want you to jump in. The idea here was that we've been, Nina, we've been going through the code, using it for the last three months and finding some some minor and some a little less minor things that aren't aren't working so well, some typos, some bad sites, and some confusing language, so staff has been working and making note of those, and we have before you a number of changes to, I think we've hit every chapter at this point with some minor changes, and I guess I'll just go through them, or we can start with Chapter 1, we just had a typo and a bad citation, does anyone want me to go over those in detail? Show you those? No, move on. Chapter 2, the only change is to revise the definition of affordable housing. This will meet our new, will meet new state statutes. And I also feel like it probably is a little bit, or a lot better, having written the first one. I know this one's much better, so I've got this pulled up here, it eliminates the current affordable housing definition and breaks it up into affordable housing for sale and affordable housing for rent, and then there, the standards are in there for each of those, which are a little bit different. Are there any questions on that one?
No.
Chapter 3 has quite a bit more going on. Should I go over those in detail? What are the rest, do you think? I guess I should. So let me jump to the first change. Which is we noticed that neighborhood, business, zone, district, it had a setback, just one setback, but two types of uses, both residential and commercial are allowed in neighborhood business. We, they had set it at one seven-foot setback, which was, is really quite a bit more than the residential setbacks, which are mostly five feet. So we just added in this case, clarified that the seven foot was for commercial development in neighborhood business, and that you only needed five feet for residential. And if you go on back to the residential zone districts, you'll see why we did that, which is most of the zones are one, are two, are three, have a five-foot side yard setbacks, so it didn't seem right to require neighborhood business to have a bigger setback than those. Let's see, Table 3.4 was really just some citations that took you to the wrong place, so we've corrected those. But there are quite a few other changes. That first one there is the incorrect citation. We did also switch a few of the uses where accessory ADUs were permitted in all districts, but they were conditional in our RE district, which is one lot and one house in Cortez. So we thought that might be more fair to make that also permitted to match the other districts. And then in the central business district, we do have some single-family homes. Somebody came in and asked whether or not they could do an ADU on one of those residential parcels, and I was, we were a bit confused because technically, no, you couldn't do an ADU, but you know, you can do pretty high-density development in it, so we thought it would only be fair to add them as a permitted use also in the central business district. Going down on you can see that we also added some additional residential types in the commercial zone district. Previously, in our code, you could only do residential uses as a conditional use, I believe, in the single fam, for single-family. And as upstairs above commercial in the commercial district, this new code really expands residential uses in the commercial district. And so, but it left off some of the newer uses, for example, it allowed single-family homes, it allowed townhomes as conditional uses, it did not allow duplexes, so we just wanted to make that make more sense and put all those different types of residential uses as conditional uses in the commercial zone. Farmers markets, that's just a mix, they were mix up, they were down as permitted, but when you go to 3.064E, it required a temporary use permit, so we're just making that match. We did add a new definition
Excuse me a minute, on that temporary use permit, is it just for one year, or is it three years?
Oh, I have to look.
Okay. Just curious.
We'll get to it.
Yeah, I'll look it up.
Okay. I believe it was like one and allowed for extensions, but I don't want to guess and be wrong. We added a definition of outdoor recreation for, as a use, mostly because somebody had, I think our Parks and Rec director said, hey, wait a minute, it doesn't really specify where you can have parks, in what zones. So we put that in there, these are public outdoor recreation, things like parks, and we put them as permitted in all zones. And then there's two definitions, so there's outdoor recreation and then outdoor commercial recreation, which is conditional in the C-zone, and we'll get to those definitions. Whoops, this isn't supposed to be here. Wrong draft. Here's a change to the ADU section that was first recommended by the state, and we decided to pull out some of the ADU. We were starting to make some changes to the ADU based on state recommendations, we took most of them out feeling like there's need to be looked at separately, but this one survived that process, mostly because our attorney felt like it made a lot of sense to only require and be, because really, the only time you can check whether an ADU or the the existing home is occupied by the landowner, by the property owner, really is at the time of application, it would be really hard for the city to keep up with that, if someone were to decide to move to Phoenix. Move to France. And we wouldn't really know that at any time, and keep both the main unit and the ADU as rentals, so it now, we added either the single-family dwelling or the ADU must be occupied by the property owner, the new language is at the time of application for the ADU permit. What'd you find?
So for a temporary use permit, a time li, a time limit needs to be specified on the temporary use permit, but it leaves a lot of discrepancy, or discretion, as far as that goes, it it's based on the use, so if it's a temporary office trailer, then it specifically says you can have that for 120 days, but in general, for the temporary use permits, it says, "A time limit for discontinuance of the temporary use shall be specified on the temporary use permit." So basically, a time limit.
Because the farmer's market runs from a certain time in the spring to a certain time in the fall, but every year then, would they have to try to get that temporary permit?
Yeah, so they'd need to, well, as it stands right now, I believe that the one that they applied for specifies the start date and the end date of this, this year, so they'd have to come back to the city to re-renew.
Okay.
But we, the city could establish a longer time period, like seasonally for three years, five years.
Yeah, so maybe the next one, they would request that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, the next change was in the use standards for dwelling mixed use. Really, we started trying to apply this and realized that the, under two, the use standards, this is the requirement for mixed use in the commercial zone. And with previously, the only residential uses we allowed were 2A, where it was up to one-half the floor area of single-story non-residential building. Over and multiple floors upstairs are allowed unlimited residential use. And then it had some strange standards for where they were located, saying that if it's adjacent to the highway, commercial use is required on the first floor of the mixed-use building. Well, that is what's required in A, so I'm not sure what, we didn't know why that had to be repeated. And then under C, it said you don't need a commercial component if it's not adjacent to the highways, but then we realized, well, it's not a mixed-use building if they don't have a commercial component. It's just a residential building, which are now conditional in the commercial zone, so just suggested we get rid of those two provisions. And then we get down to the flea market. Somewhere, did I miss it? Oh, this is where we defined the outdoor recreation. This is the public definition, that where outdoor recreation for the public, open to the community, or it could be, say, a park in a subdivision, which is open to the residents, but not commercial in nature. And we wanted to include areas both for active or passive recreation. And then you'll see later on here, we've got a definition, whoops. I'll get to it. Flea market, we had no use standards for a flea market, but we had them for a farmer's market, so we thought it was kind of strange to have more standards on the farmer's market than we do on the flea market, so we added use standards for the flea markets. They're very, very similar to the farmer's market requirement. What's the next one I'm looking for? Was that the, that was our last cha-change in Chapter 3. Chapter 4 has a very tiny change, which maybe I don't know if you even recall, but when the code was adopted, there was a provision added that allowed for what is called minor deviations and exceptions for when it seems that a requirement is not necessary for a certain type of use, so it, it sort of opened up the door for applicants to ask for a change to a code standard. The, the, that was added in to Chapters 5 and 3, but it wasn't added in Chapter 4, which is the subdivision sta，在the chapter, so we're adding it to Chapter 4. Then, Chapter 5. These are, were two, I know one of them, somebody wants to talk about, but 5.025B is a really minor change, there's a reference in there that said all off-street parking must have a driveway, there's a minimum of 20 feet and a maximum of 40 feet. This isn't true in all cases, so I removed that just to reference Section 5.03, which is the actual standards for a driveway, and that way we don't have any redundant, well, it wasn't even redundancy, it contradicted itself, so we got rid of that. Recommending that you get rid of it. Then in the signs section, there was a section in there that said the maximum amount of a window that can be covered with signs is 50%. It didn't say per window, it didn't, and there were people in here trying to say that, well, I want to cover all my windows, but I won't cover the ones in the back, so I'm meeting the 50% requirement. We just wanted to clarify that that should be 50% per window. There is, there was some discussion at the work session that maybe we shouldn't do that, so the way it stands and recommended in here is that it says the amount of a window that can be covered with signs is 50% per window. Anyone want to jump in and talk about that, or do you want to save it to the end and talk about them? Save it? Richard? I know you want to talk about it. No? Okay, don't talk about it.
I think it's too late.
And then Chapter 6, we really made quite a few changes in there. Get there. And this really came about as we were preparing checklists for the applicants for all the different types of applications, and we really noticed that the lists that are in this chapter sometimes missed some things, and sometimes mostly missed some things, but, or, or a few cases I'll get to, they were just incorrect, and most of it was carried over from the old code, but we want to make sure that we get that, this more clear. So going through that, the first changes were really just in our application procedures table. We wanted to make sure that all the types of applications that require an ordinance, that it was stated the same way, so a zone map amendment, which we were doing when we adopted the zoning map separately, we want to make sure that it also stated that you needed two readings, no hearing at the first reading. And then we found another one, someone applied for historic designation, that has traditionally been done by ordinance, so for one, we want to make sure it says historic designation, because that's what it's called now, not landmark. And clarify that that also gets done by ordinance, where there's two readings, no hearing at first reading. Here's another thing where the appeals was, portion was written a little bit oddly, and then we added minor deviations or exceptions pursuant to Yeah, we didn't have four in there. I need to add that in there. Is it 4.012B? Okay. And so that's to establish the process for people applying to that, because that new provision got added towards the end. It wasn't in the table, and there really weren't any procedures on how to follow that. I think you'll see in here another example where the citations were all a little bit off, somehow they had Chapter 16, so we changed that to Chapter 6, and it had some of, because we added a section, they all shifted a little bit there. Page through this. Here's another thing that I think you'll know we've had some issues with, is determination of a complete application, because we added quite a we added some requirements in here in the code, I want to ma, we want to make it clear that I want to ma-, we want to make it clear that some of those might not apply to all types of applications, so that the zo-, the zoning administrator could waive any of those required submittal items if they're, they're not applicable in a specific application. Okay, and then, another thing we wanted to clarify that we've been having trouble with is the process where somebody submits their application. The zoning admini-administrator sends it out to city staff, consultants, and review agencies. And oftentimes, it's not adequate, and it's not ready to move on to the planning commission. So, there's a bit of back and forth trying to get it adequate. So, we wanted to clarify that process in here. That if, for example, and it's an example that happens fairly often, they submit a drainage report that's incorrectly done or not done by an engineer, doesn't work. The city's consultant engineer reviews it. No, this isn't going to work. We have to go, we want to go back first to the applicant, get it right before we bring it forward to the planning commission or city council. So, we want to make sure that process was in the code. Moving forward, again, we found some circular references where the historic designation said, see the table for the noticing requirement. And then, the table said, see the code for the noticing requirement, so we added it in here. Um, annexation is complicated as far as noticing. But, so, I've got that in there, but we wanted to make sure it references state statute, which is the requirement for noticing on annexations. We did have someone start to propose an annexation, so we got a little worried about that. And then, I think we're going to get to the submittal items, and you'll see what we were changing and why. This actually was just a typo of some sort. Okay, so, here we are in the. Which one am I in here? I went too fast. Preliminary plat, so we haven't seen a lot of that, these, but it's for subdivision. So, we've got all the submittal information on here. Project narrative, development plan. In, in the subdivision part of the code, it does require a surface and subsurface soils report. So, I want to make sure that that was here for the checklist. There are also portions of the code that require traffic assessment. So, again, we wanted to make sure that people understood that that was going to be required. Um, C dot would have required it anyway, but we don't want people to submit their subdivision, have it go to C dot, have C dot say you need to do a traffic assessment, and add delays to the project. Um, again, this is the final plat submittal requirements. We noticed that it requires you to say what the proposed use for the sites are. We don't want them putting the use on a subdivision plat, so, um, eliminated that. Cleaning up the dedication certificate, which was super complicated and not necessary, so we cleaned that up. Um, I had a surveyor in the room ask me whether it required a description using meets and bounds method. And it didn't, so he asked that we add that, and it's consistent with their requirements under statute for surveyors, but we didn't always get it, and this makes it clear. We don't, I don't know why it had the approval certificate on a final plat being by the planning commission. It's actually city council in the process, so we corrected that. Um, wanted to make sure that under construction plans, that it spoke to streets and roads. We did have someone submitting a street and road improvement plan for an existing subdivision that had never been completed. And we realized that it wasn't even on the list for a construction plan, so we wanted to make sure that was there. Then. I think the next one we had major changes in was the site plan submittal requirements, which I think you've seen a lot of, so that's right here. And as you can see, I was just cleaning up language with D N E. So, it's location and dimensions of existing and proposed structures and signage, signs, and then you can eliminate layout and dimensions of all buildings. Common open space, normally with the site plan, you wouldn't have common open space. That's a requirement for subdivisions or P U Ds. So, we eliminated that, um, suggests that they include a paving plan. Specifically, at least indicate on the site plan, all areas proposed for surfacing and type of surfacing proposed. That's something that we've been sort of challenged with in the site plan submittals lately. So, that it would be good to make them aware right at the very beginning that, that they should show that on their site plan. Site contours in the code, right now, it says it a minimum of ten-foot intervals. They've always, when we get site contours, their ten feet really don't show you anything hardly in Cortez. So, we're suggesting you switch that to two-foot intervals, which is, most of them I've seen are actually one-foot intervals, but, um, at this point, but two would be acceptable. Um, again, lots or plots is a subdivision requirement, it doesn't belong in the site plan requirements. But, another thing that we don't always have them show on their first round of a site plan is any proposed storage areas with screening, so we're recommending that you put that on the checklist. Eliminate proposed areas for dedication, parks and parkways, school sites, all subdivision requirements. Asking for a utility plan, so we know where the sewer and water lines are coming in. If they have to be added, or where they are now. Um, a narrative describing the proposed development. Again, this is, has been challenging for some of our applicants lately. So, we tried to give them some suggestions in here as to what types of things should be in a narrative. So, it's easier for you to make a decision based on impacts. Um, down, it says drainage plan, added grading in drainage plan, because we've definitely had some grading happen, and applicants aren't telling us about it. It's creating issues for the neighbors, so we want to make sure they show that on their plans. And then, traffic ass-assessment, following C dot traffic assessment guidelines to determine if it's required and the level of requirement. Um, I believe I added that, was that in their packet? Did that make it in the packet, what those requirements are? But essentially, since most of our commercial development is served directly off of a C dot highway, it's really in C dot's hands anyway. And we didn't want to get to the point, and we did a couple times, where people submitted to us. Um, we required them to go talk to C dot, and then they found out they needed a traffic assessment. And they were, again, behind the eight ball in timing, having to find someone to do the assessment. Um, and we just want to make sure people know everything upfront that's going to be required of them. So, it's not really a Cortez requirement, it's a C dot requirement. We do have standards in the code, though, that say, based on amount of traffic. And unless they do that first easy level of traffic assess-assessment, we wouldn't know what that is. Um, I think. That clarified grading. Oh, the appeal section. So, I think we struggled with this, really, the difference between an appeal and a variance. The appeal process that was in here was more of a var. Yeah, we wanted to make sure that it was more clear the way this was written. That because some of the decision levels have been dropped down by this code, that you could clearly appeal it on. So, if it's a, if staff were to deny a minor subdivision, we'd want to allow them to appeal that on to the planning commission. Um, if the, if you as the planning commission were to deny a conditional use permit, again, we want to make it clear that they could appeal that on to the city council. And really, that's just giving them some due process rather than having to go to court. Um, it, the, the way this was written before, some of those appeals went to the board of adjustment. It's really an interpretation of code, it feels that city council is a more appropriate place to send that. So, that's what we've clarified in there. I clarified a little bit on the submittal requirements, tell us why you're appealing. And I eliminated a l-application form because they've already applied. They've applied and gotten denied. Um, we want to make sure, we can just use that existing application information plus a letter saying why they felt like whoever made the decision was in the wrong. This appeals to court being eliminated, it doesn't eliminate their ability to appeal or challenge anything in court. We just didn't know why it's in our code. Don't want to give them any ideas. Because it, and the way it was stated was every decision by the board of adjustment can be, go to court. It's really any decision by the city council or the board of adjustment. So, we'd have to either, if we want to keep it in, we've got to put it everywhere. Or, we just thought it might be cleaner to take it out. And then, this whole minor deviations process, we had to add. Got four there. Um, because those were added and there was no process for them. So, we've got all that in there, how you submit, what you need to submit, what the criteria is. That was kind of in the code, so we just sort of pulled that out and cleaned it up a little bit. For the minor deviation submittal, and then, the last major change here was we found that somehow reimbursement agreements dropped out of the code. There is a reference to them back in the subdivision chapter. But, it had been, the whole idea of them had been eliminated, so we had to, so we put that back in. That's all I got.
And I guess I should have included that as part of the public hearing, but I'll retro-open public hearing then. Thank you, Nancy. Um, is anybody to speak for or against any of the changes? Seeing none, we'll close the. Um, any commissioners, do you have any comments? Uh, we'll close the public hearing. Um, do you need a motion recommending the resolution?
Yes.
We have a suggested motion for you.
Yeah, um, I'm looking at the resolution itself.
In the staff report, there's a suggested.
You have it?
Resolution number eight, series twenty twenty-five.
Do you need it?
No, I haven't. I make a motion that the planning and zoning commission approve resolution number eight, series two, twenty twenty-five, excuse me. A resolution recommending that council approve the proposed revision to the land use code attached to the resolution as exhibit A.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? And this is just a recommendation to city council, right?
Right.
Okay, uh, let's proceed to vote.
Tell?
Yes.
Rehover?
Yes.
Remy?
Yes.
Um, unfinished business, none, new business, none. Other items of business, um, Nancy, is Jason here?
Jason actually is under the weather today, so, just us.
So, Nancy, are you going to?
Review proposition.
Highlight each of these?
Is that next?
Yeah.
Okay.
Are we reviewing the proposition fast track?
Yeah. First item is review of the proposition one, two, three, housing fast-track requirements.
Um, okay.
But, so. The proposition one, two, through, three, which Cortez opted into, which provides funding for affordable housing. It's okay, let's present it. Requires that to remain eligible, communities adopt new code provisions or a, what they're calling fast-track for affordable housing projects. The state defines that as that, and if an affordable housing project was submitted, we deem their application complete. The city has ninety days to take it through the public process and either approve or deny the request. Now, the city of Cortez already exceeds the ninety-day requirement in almost every case with a site plan, which is probably what an affordable housing project would be. It would be either that or subdivision, really. But, um, the state is recommending that you adopt that, you codify that, so that because, even though it's fast now, it's not in the code that you have to get it done within ninety days. Now, there's a big incentive from the state, if you do, if the city does that, if we adopt new provisions to re-mandate a ninety-day review for an affordable housing project, they're basically giving the city fifty thousand dollars that can be used for affordable housing, for code amendments, for, is that the whole list?
Yeah, it's, it's pretty broad, anything, I think, that, um, is part of the L P C grant.
So, I'm not going to go over it in total detail with you, because we'll probably bring, I'm hoping to bring this back to you in October, which would allow the city to, assuming you saw it in October, agreed with it, recommended it on, we could then get it to city council for first and second readings, have it adopted by the end of twenty twenty-five. And the state would be el-, would be granted the fifty thousand dollar bonus, so. Big incentive, big cash incentive here to get it done. Um, we've got it rough draft, I've been working with Lisa, um, on, on some of these changes. She also helped, she wrote the definition of affordable housing that you just recommended on. She's here tonight if you have any questions. But, the basic idea of it is the way we've started to draft this, and it may change before it gets to you next month, is that we'd add a section of the code entitled incentives, okay? And at this point, it would only apply, these incentives would only apply to affordable housing. Where, I was thinking that in the future, you could maybe apply incentives to job gen, you know, projects that generate jobs or other desirable land uses. know, projects that generate jobs or other desirable land uses that you want to encourage. So the way this is written now, it's only applies to affordable housing, but it speaks to the incentives that, that can be awarded if you qualify as an affordable project. So it goes through all the, how do you qualify, what, what counts, what doesn't, how they might say, no, we don't want these incentives. In part, because if, if it's going too fast for a developer, they may say, wait, stop, because what's likely to happen is if that deadline was looming, the city, the, and staff and the Planning Commission might recommend denial of a project because it's not ready. So we would need to have a provision in there that allows the developer to say, oh, oh, don't want that one, I want more time, so that they don't get denied, essentially. And this is a requirement from the state, that they have the ability to decline. And then, essentially, how they earn it, you have to have a certain percentage of the housing be affordable. We've got a couple of provisions they'd have to meet in here, and this is all just suggested, so you can play with this a little bit. There's some thresholds that you can't go under or over based on state requirements, but the suggestion here is that if it's a mixed-use project, that it be primarily residential. And the idea, the, that section A one really was written to prevent someone from doing a, what was the example I used, a family dollar with two units on top, because the next requirement is only fifty percent of the residential units are restricted. They could put two units on top, say, hey, one's residential, I need a fast track through the process. Really, you want to make it a primarily residential property before you're going to give them incentives. Then we've got it said at least half of the residential units are restricted to be affordable if it's for sale, if it's rentals. Is that still at half, Lisa, the residential?
Yes.
Yeah. And then, so if you meet all these requirements, you'd qualify for fast track. The other incentive that our code already had, as far at, for affordable projects, is increased development potential. That's already in our code, so that where affordable housing units are provided, and our current code is only, only ten percent of the units need to be affordable, it, you get a density bonus of twenty percent. So basically, it's a lot of complicated language that says, if you're affordable, you got two incentives available, density bonus and faster review.
So to make sure I understand this, if a developer comes along, wants to meet all of these requirements, they're supposed to get fifty thousand dollars?
No, no, that comes to the city. If you adopt this code.
Okay.
Or something similar.
So then the developer has to follow these, but they get the...
The developer would come in and say, hey, you have to approve or deny me within ninety days. Plus, they could get a twenty percent density bonus, which is already in the code.
So they get expedited review processing, the increase in development potential, and that's their incentive to follow these requirements. And the city, the city's incentive is to have this in place, so if somebody wants to take advantage of it, then the city would get a grant from the state, is that?
Yeah.
Okay.
As Nancy mentioned, we're already pretty fast, as long as everything is in order when it's, when the application is turned in, but this makes it official and offers, you know, offers a bit of an incentive.
Sure, gotcha.
And we did rough review this with the state, and they said that it would meet the requirements, basically, which was great to hear. They also want Lisa to present on the City of Cortez process to other communities.
Will there be a workshop with, joint workshop with the council to go over any details, or just bring it back in October and then?
We were kind of thinking just bring it back. Really, it doesn't change anything. You're already fast, you already have the twenty percent. It really just puts it in writing.
Okay.
And makes you eligible for fifty thousand dollars.
Anybody have questions for Nancy? Okay, thank you.
So it's coming, just thought you might want to think about it. We're, we're open to revising it if you have other ideas.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on to item B then. Administrative approvals.
Who has those?
I'll go ahead and, if, our planner's not here, so if you want me to take it, I can, Mr. Chairman?
Sure, this is just falsely information item, isn't it?
Yeah, it's just an FYI, but it's, it's new, it's a new item on the agenda. Since the code was adopted on April eighteenth of this year, it, some of the items that normally had to go through, say, a longer and more formal review process, it basically shortened the review process and created some administrative approvals. So we have them listed here for you as an FYI, but the items that are now subject to administrative approvals are formal interpretations of the code, final plats, minor subdivisions, condominium subdivision conversion, plat amendment, and minor site plan. So some minor items that, you know, by, previously, we required them to either go to planning and zoning and council, or just planning and zoning, and it just added some extra time for the pro, to the process. And so, anyway, these are the ones that have been approved since we last met with you, and just in the spirit of being open, we wanted to make sure that that was on the agenda as well.
So theoretically, these would just help and shorten the timeframe for an applicant?
Yeah.
It's still me, the same standards?
Sure.
But staff's looking at them, checking the boxes and approving it.
We also send it out to agency review in case there are concerns from agencies.
All right, any questions? Thank you. Next is a county proposed project.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and introduce that if you'd like. So the Montezuma County Planning and Zoning Commission will be holding a public hearing to review and determine recommendations to be made to the county commissioners regarding a seventeen lot major subdivision and rezoning application. It's a property located along one forty-five. It's just north of the City of Cortez, so it falls within our zone of influence. It's not adjacent to the city, but it's, it's close. So we're just, we just attached it for your review, and then if you have any comments that you'd like us to forward on to the County Planning Commission, let us know.
How, how many lots were they going to have? Seventeen?
Yes.
And is there an average size of the lot?
Let me check.
I mean, the, the total is ninety-five acres, right? Divided by seventeen, but there's a lake in there, too, so.
Ninety-one acres?
Ninety-one.
Can you, sorry, we can't hear you. Can you turn on your mic?
Sorry, I'm just reading this.
Oh, okay.
Ninety-one point seven-six acres less thirty-five acres, that will not be part of the project. So you're looking at fifty-five acres in total divided by that seventeen lot. So on average, it's about...
Three acres.
As I was looking at it, I wasn't quite sure where they were going to access Highway one forty-five. From all of those.
I think it's, they're proposing an access kind of on the north side of the proposed subdivision, so up further.
When does this go to the County Planning and Zoning?
I believe in just a couple of days. So we'll have to turn any comments around pretty quickly.
Does anybody want to make a comment to the county?
Not at this time.
Yeah, I guess I don't either. Thank them for including us, I guess, in their information.
Okay, but no, no comments? Correct?
And then I guess building permits for your perusal. And seeing nothing else, I guess I would entertain, or add entertaining emotion to adjourn, right?
Was that the last one? I thought we had building permits issued.
Yeah, it's in your packet to review. It's this right here, the middle?
Sorry that they're so small.
It's ours information items. So I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
I second.
I guess I made the motion to adjourn, and in a second, let's proceed tomorrow.
Rehover?
Yes.
Tell?
Yes.
Remi?
Yes, meeting adjourned.